Call to order the meeting of Monday, February the 27th. And if the city clerk would please read the roll.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Moller.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep. You have before you the minutes from the regular meeting of February the 13th. Do we have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Mayor Protam Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We have two presentations tonight. If the clerk would please read the first one.
Chief Robert Eich will update the council concerning the progress made with the City of Marysville concerning the collaboration of their fire departments.
Good evening, Mayor Rep., City Council. Before I get into this discussion about the collaboration, I wanted to take a second and comment about the fundraising event that the firefighters' union and retired members and community members held last week for one of their members, Kevin Anderson, who's battling cancer. The event was outstanding. The effort that went into it was beyond, I think, anybody's original expectations. The more they got into it, the more they found they needed to do. April Fuller was the chairperson of the event. She did an excellent job. I'd asked her to attend tonight, but she was on vacation where it's much warmer. But I want to make sure that everybody, when they see her, to share with her just how proud of they are, what she accomplished, with the rest of her team. They went to the community and they found tremendous amount of support, a lot of donations, and they raised over $11,000 to be given to Kevin and his family to help offset his medical expenses. So I'm certainly proud of everybody that participated. They should all feel proud of their efforts, and it was just a great positive story for the community, and I just wanted to take a minute and share that.
Thank you.
As I mentioned back in December, in the goals meeting, I described dating, engagement, and marriage as related to this collaboration effort. And the reason I described it like that is that we're taking small steps. We want to make sure that we don't miss anything. There's a lot at risk when we start merging things and ideas. So we're continuing with that comparison. And at this point, what we're here tonight, I'm here tonight to report, is that we've looked into the risks that are involved in this and the benefits. And we believe right now, at this point, that benefits outweigh the risk based on the approach that we're taking. The benefits include reduction in cost as it relates to administrative positions, some senior firefighter positions, reduced overtime, partial clerical expenses. It also provides the benefit to more closely analyze a combined organization in terms of operating together. As I mentioned at the goals meeting, the process would be that each community would continue to own their assets, vehicles, buildings, and the employees would remain under the employment of each individual city. We've worked closely with our director of finance and Marysville's director of finance, and we believe that there'd be a reconciliation at some point, probably at the end of the budget cycle, and then break down what the shared costs would be. In our model, we looked at the type of formula that we would use, and it seemed kind of a natural ratio of 75-25. And we looked at population, calls for service, staffing, stations. I mean, we looked at all these different things. There seemed to be this natural breakdown of a ratio of 75-25. So that's the approach that we're taking in terms of cost, when the department operations are combined, and in terms of savings. So the first year, we approximate, and these are approximations, and projecting this is not easy because, obviously, we've never done it before, and we didn't have a consultant come in and tell us that there's a right way or a wrong way. We're kind of doing this on being a good neighbor, listening to the message out of Lansing that we need to try to shrink our costs. But at the same time, we want to maintain quality service that our residents are used to. So our estimated savings overall for the first year would be $475,000, shared at a 25-75 ratio of about $119,000 for Marysville and about $155,000 for Port Huron. I'm sorry, $355,000 for Port Huron. So let me go over that just one more time. The first year estimated savings would be about $118,000, $119,000 for Marysville and $355,000 for Port Huron. And then we also projected out future budget expenditures, given that through attrition, there could be some retirements as people became eligible. So we looked at those numbers, and in a five-year projection, if everything that we included into our formula happened, we could see savings, and again, before I say that number, I have to caution you, everything would have to happen as it's being projected. We could see savings of about $1 million in total for Marysville, a little over $3 million for Port Huron, in total, in the five years of savings. So the message from our administrators was to go slow and be cautious, and that's the approach we've taken. We believe with your support tonight, we could go forward and develop a joint operating agreement with legal counsel. We could meet with, continue to meet together and discuss operational issues, define more projected budget numbers, consider our standard of cover as it spread over two communities. And our standard of cover is the amount of time it takes to respond to an emergency. And then we set that at a 90 percent response ratio, so we'd want to rework that number. We would determine, officially determine who the new fire chief would be, and we would then look at studying the savings as we went forward. So are there any questions?
Is there anyone on council who has any questions for Chief Eich? I just want to tell you, thank you. I know that this is something you've been working on for close to a year, I think, or better at this point, and certainly you've been given the charge to try to put this together to save monies for not only us but Marysville too, and the collaborative effort is very much appreciated, for you and for Marysville too.
I really believe that the message we're getting is we need to save dollars. We need to be more efficient. I think that, you know, traditionally, communities have kind of walled themselves off. They've been their own, you know, their own identity. This really is a step to share some of the cost and the duplication of services, and I think in the end, the community can still have a quality service when there's an emergency. And that's, again, been our goal, to maintain that, but in the same time, do it just more feasibly. And I think that's really a win-win if we go forward with this.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, councilmember.
I got a letter here a couple of weeks ago, and my whole thing is, how's the collaboration with your bargaining union employees going? I guess there was some concern, but I've never had a follow-up letter, but I mean, I think that it sounds like it's going in a positive way.
There's always apprehension with change. As I've said, we have a great group of talented employees. They're dedicated, they're hardworking, they're committed, and as in any change, there's some concern. We've committed to them that we're going, if we go forward with this into the next step, we're going to sit down with them in our stakeholders' meeting and continue to discuss this, to work out their questions and their concerns, and we're trying to be as open as we can. We, you know, because we didn't hire outside services to evaluate this and put this together for us, we got bogged down at times in our normal day-to-day operations. You know, finance has audit reports due, that has to be their focus, so we would schedule around them. We had other projects that both Tom and I, Chief Koenig and I were working on, that we had to work around. So we couldn't just dedicate a, you know, three-month window to work on this. And I think really, when you consider we started in May, and it hasn't quite been a year, and we're to a point now where we could actually look at some legal language with the approval of this, I think we've done pretty well. Yeah, it would have been nice to go a little faster, but, and I also believe that the unions will see that, and our bargaining groups will see, that we're not dismantling contracts, we're not taking apart pension systems, we stayed away from all those negative things that they might be concerned about, and rightfully so. We think under this model, they can continue to be employees of their respective cities, but then just operate together.
Well, just for the council and the rest of us here, I know that yourself and the fire chief of Marysville, that I've seen some of your extra things that I attend and some of you guys doing, and I know there's a lot on your plate, and I'd just like to congratulate you moving forward.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Hey, thank you.[666.82][666.82](APPLAUSE).
We'll move on to presentation number two.
Jim Ralcon will give a brief presentation on a cemetery cleanup project.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Mr. Brown, Sue Child, and members of the audience and those watching on TV. I'm very pleased to be here tonight to announce a collaborative project with my business and others in the community who are all going to volunteer their time and money to support what hopefully will be an annual event. For the audience on TV and otherwise, you can see the name of our activity entitled "Honoring Our Heritage: The First Annual Port Huron Cemetery's Sweep." Clean sweep. So I'd like to share with you a little bit about what the project is all about. You have a press release in front of you, but for the benefit of our listening audience, I'll kind of paraphrase some of the press release. Our cemeteries are sacred locations deserving the highest respect from the members of our community. Port Huron Cemetery's Clean Sweep will be an annual event to clean debris, leaves, fallen tree branches from the grounds of our various cemetery locations. The first year will be Lakeside Cemetery, Allied Veterans Cemetery, and Mount Hope Cemetery. The project is scheduled for the weekend of Saturday, May, excuse me, Saturday, May 5th, and Sunday, May 6th, with a start time on Saturday of 8:00 a.m. and a start time on Sunday of noon. We hope to be recruiting volunteers throughout the entire community for this event, and again, the event's going to take place, rain or shine. Volunteers will be provided the Clean Sweep organizational plan on the website that's in front of you on the screen, cemeterycleansweep.com. By the way, the website will stay up for the entire year. After the event, we'll be posting pictures and other activities of that particular day. The planning and logistics for the event is being organized and sponsored by my company. The media and marketing sponsor is Pollock Randall, Carr Simpson, and Marysville Funeral Homes. While the launch this year is for Lakeside Cemetery, Mount Hope, and Allied Veterans, other communities will be encouraged to follow our leadership and organize and plan their cemetery cleanup as well. At the moment, I'm going to ask my webmaster to come up. She'll mention how that will work. The volunteer recruitment effort will focus on community groups, organizations to establish their Clean Sweep team, and join others on the scheduled dates to participate in the event. Details of other ways that businesses can donate in-kind, noncash services will also be noted on the website. Informational posters, sign-up information, billboards, and other advertising will take place over the next couple of months to encourage groups to get involved. We hope to have hundreds of volunteers participating in this event. There will also be a 24-hour call number, it's on the screen here, in partnership with Port City Communications and our media sponsor. 24 hours a day, seven days a week, people can call for information, and we're encouraging the public to call that number if they would like to get involved. A community-wide effort, this community-wide effort is designed to bring this community together for a great cause and ultimately honoring our heritage. I do want to point out and do some thanks right off the bat. First of all, the city staff who are currently working at the cemetery under Tim Hickey's leadership are phenomenal. They are doing a great job. So this is actually a salute to support them. I think we have a great cemetery, and we can certainly, as citizens, participate and help them as we get ready for Memorial Day weekend. So I want to thank them, and also the staff at Mount Hope Cemetery and Ron Seglerick at that cemetery, who's behind the project. So special thanks again also to Sue Child, City Manager Bruce Brown, and all the city staff, Chief Eich, for their support. And again, let me introduce at this time John and Ann Kendrick, who are in the audience who are underwriting all the media costs for this event. So if you'll stand, John and Ann, to be recognized over here. Thank them for their support. Thank you.[941.43][941.43](APPLAUSE). I'm going to ask Michelle Mensiger briefly to come up and mention the website. She's done the design and the graphic for Honoring Our Heritage. It's in color now up here, so Michelle's going to just mention quickly how the site will navigate.
Well, I just want to point out, first of all, that the site is going to be connected to Facebook, so I encourage everyone who, I believe, is on Facebook now to please share this with all of their friends so the word can get out and we can chat and make discussions. You can also, I'm also going to make it an event so people can collect themselves and invite their friends, and we can definitely pull 2012 people to come and clean cemeteries that day. If there's any questions or anything that comes up on the site, please feel free to get in touch with me. Jim has my number. I am always available, and if there's anything that you feel that needs to be changed, if there's something that you want done differently, I'd be happy to do that.
And you click on any of the links, again, that are there in the others, that'll give you more information. So entertain any questions at this time. We're not here to ask for any money. We're just here to say that we expect all of you to bring your rakes, your lunch, your plan. Bruce Brown, our city manager, immediately said, "I will be there." And so, again, we are going to do this, have a good time, do something positive for our community, and that's why we're calling Clean Sweep. We'll all work together and form our teams and support one another to clean up our city and our cemeteries.
Well, I certainly thank you for your enthusiasm and for the work you've put into this, and for the Kendricks for their help with this whole project. I know you talked to me about it a while ago, and I wasn't sure if you'd pull it off this quickly, but you did.
Nothing to it.
That's really great. Does anyone on council have any comments?
Show of hands, who will be there?
I'll try.
Okay. How about the audience here? Show of hands, how many are going to come in? All right, we're on our way to that 2012 volunteers that day. And more details coming. We're still working on a variety of other pieces in the weeks ahead, so we'll keep you informed, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
We will move on to public hearings.
We have six public hearings today that are regarding code cases, and they are, public hearings to determine whether they constitute a nuisance as defined by Chapter 10, Section 10-211, and Chapter 34, Section 34.3 of the Port Huron City Code. The first public hearing will be for code case number 11-036, located at 942 Howard Street. Following the public hearing, council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
We have public hearing number one, 942 Howard Street, and perhaps we could have Ms. Harmer. You might as well bring your stuff all, oh, you got it all right there? I was going to say, you might as well just stay there, and if you'd just give us some information on this one, and then we'll open it up to the audience.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. Thank you. 942 Howard Street is a home that, although we did attempt to work with the previous property owners in entering into some work agreements, they were unable to continue on with the home, and unfortunately, we're faced with foreclosure. The property will qualify if council decides to authorize its demolition tonight for a demolition grant, and so we're pleased to be able to at least use those resources as well. If we could go through the photographs real quickly here. The property itself has experienced, of course, a partial roof cave-in, the foundation, soffit fascia boards, obviously, the wiring is not up to code, or the heating system. Several cracks in the foundation and a lot of water damage due to the condition of the roof.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to make comments on public hearing number one? Would like to just give us your name, please?
Good evening. My name is Ray Skedeller. I'm an attorney on behalf of Wells Fargo Bank. Wells Fargo is the bank that conducted the foreclosure, and my client asked me to attend the meeting tonight, and from the pictures, the house is obviously in pretty bad disrepair, but I was asked to come here and advise the council that the foreclosure itself, the sale took place back in September, so the homeowner's redemption period does not expire until March 1st. Till that date passes, title in the bank will not be final, and the bank won't be in a position to perform an eviction and then take possession of the property and see what they could do with it. So my request tonight is that whatever action the council takes, that is really twofold. One, that the property is put on something of a slow track so the bank has an opportunity to take possession and determine how to best deal with it, if it can be rehabilitated or if it does need to be demolished. And then the, really, the second thing is to possibly, if it is going to be demolished, work with the bank or give us an opportunity to be in touch with the city and determine how that's going to go ahead as far as who's responsible for it and the costs associated with it.
Did you say March 1st is when?
March 1st, yeah.
The sweep then?
Thursday, that's correct. It has a six-month redemption period, and with a case like this, there was no way to shorten it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question of you, Kim? No, I'm fine. Thank you. If we went ahead and approved its demolition, I assume you would be working with the bank. It's obviously not going to come down between now and Thursday, so...
No, that's correct. And again, it appears that this property would be eligible for a demolition grant, so the question of jacking for position, if you will, in order to save costs or going through that whole process really would not be necessary, in our opinion.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address public hearing number one? Seeing no one, I declare public, well, the mallet is falling apart. I declare public hearing number one closed, and is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lewandowski for demolition. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, is there any discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
I guess I have a question for Kim. Would it be in any way disadvantaged to the city if we postpone this until the second meeting in March? So that you could work with the bank?
Honestly, Councilmember Moller, I would say not. I mean, we can continue to go forward. The actual demolition of the structure is going to, especially with, if we use any grant funds, it's going to typically take about 45 days in order to do the abatement and the review process that we need. We would continue to work with the bank through that entire process time, so...
If we order the demolition and the bank decides that they want to fix it?
If the bank decided they'd want to fix it, honestly, I've only had one bank in all the years that I've done this that has, have entered into a work agreement and actually taken on the expense of making the repairs to our city codes.
My question, so if we pass it tonight to demolish it, and they decide, they're the second bank miraculously to come up with this decision, does it get demolished because we passed it, or what happens?
No, I would simply bring it back to you and let you know that we have the opportunity to enter into a work agreement and ask for performance bond from the bank, and with council's approval, we'd go ahead and enter into that work agreement. But I wouldn't want to put you in that position unless we had them willing and able to sign the work agreement and providing that performance bond to cover the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Mayor Rep. Yes, Councilmember Archibald.
Kim, what grant funds would we be using?
We have some limited program income funds from one of our first-year NSP programs, and it can only be used in very specific areas of the community, and only if we are serving some sort of a public good or removing a dangerous structure. So this would appear to fit that criteria.
And do we not have homeowners in that area that could benefit from the grant rather than using the grant money to help a bank tear down a home?
We do have additional funds because these are program income funds from the first program. It's a little more limited, so the answer, I guess, would be yes to both.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to public hearing number two.
It's for code case number 11-040, located at 2035 7th Street. Following the public hearing, council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
If you will go ahead. Kim.
The property at 2035 7th Street has been vacant for some time. The property owners have been notified several times, as well as a second address that we had for them, to no avail. They have not responded. Our inspectors did go out then and obtained the appropriate papers required to conduct the inspection, and we began it as a code case. As you can see, the condition of the property has continued to deteriorate, and we've gotten no response with regards to our requests for repairs.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council on this public Seeing no one, I declare public hearing number two closed, and do we have a motion for demolition?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Archibald. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to public hearing number three.
It's for code case number 11-041, located at 513 14th Street. Following the public hearing, council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
Councilmembers, Mayor, 513 14th Street, also property that we've had no response from. The property owner, though, at the last minute did contact us and said that they had lost the property, they had moved out almost, not quite, but almost a year ago, and that they obviously had no intention of making the repairs or responding to our requests. We have had a response back from Chase Bank, letting us know that they have begun the redemption period, which is a six-month time period, and asking if we would at least keep in touch with them or if we hear anything from the property owner as well, and we have agreed to continue to work with them on notifications.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address council on public hearing number three? Seeing no one, I declare public hearing number three closed, and do we have a motion for demolition?
So moved.
Councilmember Harris, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protam Archibald, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to public hearing number four.
It's for code case number 11-042, located at 1037 Cedar Street. It's for the garage only. Following the public hearing, council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
Mayor and councilmembers, the garage structure located behind 1037 Cedar Street, the city has been working for over a year, trying to get the property owner to make repairs and take care of it. In fact, we've gone to court two different times, and at the last court hearing, the city was advised by the court system that we could go ahead and proceed with it like we would any other type of a code case, and so that is why we're before you this evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number four? Seeing no one, I declare public hearing number four closed. Do we have a motion for demolition?
So moved.
Councilmember Moller, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there any discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Public hearing number five.
It's for code case number 11-046, located at 2922 Little Street. Following the public hearing, council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
Mayor and councilmembers, 2922 Little Street... Mayor and council members, twenty-nine twenty-two Little Street, the property, unfortunately, the property owners have passed away. We have been in touch with a family member. They are attempting to go through the probate process, but it's been very difficult and very expensive for them to do that. They would qualify for demolition grant, and we've offered that to them so that they can then concentrate their efforts on the property itself and finishing the process for probate.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address council on public hearing number five? Just give us your name, please.
Mary Ann Sullivan. Go ahead. I'm the daughter of the deceased, and I'm the one trying to get it through probate. I got the paperwork going. I'm trying to work with the city to either bring it up violation or demolition of it, as long as I can continue with probate, to be able to get things. Because there's like, I mean, my brother and four other stepbrothers and sisters that are involved, according to will. And I'm trying to contact them. I've got a hold of two of them's stuff. That's as far as I've gotten. So I'm just asking if I can get more time to either fix these violations or be able to get it through probate and go, according to will, sell it.
Do you think it's fixable?
Honestly, not really. But according to the will and stuff, I don't know. I'm just trying to go by the will, so nobody gets done wrong. But they won't leave demolition until it's through probate, so I can't sign it.
Okay.
It brings me here tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Ma'am?
What's your wishes for the property?
Well, actually, I mean, as far as it being demolished, I can work with that. I do have some dogs there, but, and they're being taken care of. But as far as keeping the property to where I can get it through probate to own it, so I can go, according to will, to split it among the family members, that's what I'd really like to be able to do.
Yeah, so the House has no sentimental value or any value, as far as you're concerned?
Not at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask legal counsel a question? Because of this probate and the will and that, what does that do to the process?
The short answer is nothing. It doesn't stop or hold up the process at all. She should be able to get a letter of authority from the probate court to either sign a work agreement as the executor of the will, or assign the property over to the heirs, and then they could sign one on behalf of the, now that, as the new owners. So they have to have ownership of the property to sign a work agreement, and the probation process, you know, they could get a letter of authority in short order, like the same day you go down there.
Right. Okay, thank you. Ms. Harmer, if I could ask you a question. How long has this property been like that?
The water was shut off approximately a year ago, so it's been vacant for that period of time. And just to clarify, we realized that the young woman had issues with the probate, and that's why we dug a little deeper into some of our grant programs to see if we could arrange something, so that her concern was the ability, financial ability, and having the legal title to fix the whole up. We could issue, through the demolition order, we could issue the grant to do the demo. She would still continue with the process through probate to own the property, and certainly they could do whatever they'd like with that asset. But this would relieve them of the financial burden of having to fix it up and not being able to enter into the work agreement and provide the performance bond and that type of thing. So I thought that that was a solution that everybody was fairly comfortable with, and seemed to suit their needs as well.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address this public hearing?
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
If I may ask the young lady in the back room?
Sure.
Are you the executor of the will?
Yes.
Are we making the correct assumption of that? Okay.
Yes.
And do you have a lawyer that's representing you in probate?
I went through legal aid because there was a lot of cost, and then I gotta take it, because I got the paperwork all done. I just gotta take it up to the courthouse here to probate and...
And how long have your parents been deceased?
Six years. I've been trying to fix up the house and keep it going, and it's just gotten to like this, a year ago, to where I can't no more. So I'm just trying to be fair to the other family members, according to the will.
Thank you.
Thank you. We declare this public hearing closed, and do we have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Muller, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there any discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Muller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to public hearing number six.
It's for code case number eleven dash zero four nine, located at twenty-six oh three Stone Street. Following the public hearing, council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
Mayor and council members, twenty-six oh three Stone Street has been also vacant for some time. The water was shut off in January of two thousand eleven. There was at that time a little over nine hundred dollars in arrears for the water bill. The property owners have been repeatedly notified. The attorney for the property owners and for, excuse me, for Nation Star Mortgage have also been notified, but have not responded to our request to enter into a work agreement.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number six? Seeing no one, I declare public hearing number six closed. Do we have a motion for demolition?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to public hearing number seven.
Seven is to hear comments on the application of Domtar Industries Incorporated, located at seventeen hundred Washington Avenue, for an industrial facilities exemption certificate for six years on personal property. Following the public hearing, council will consider a resolution to approve the application of Domtar Industries for this industrial facilities exemption certificate for six years on personal property.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council on public hearing number seven?
I'm Jennifer Elsner with Domtar. Just representing, Rick Van An is our mill manager, but he is out of town, so I'm coming into his place. All the projects on this list are all a maintained business. We are not eliminating any jobs, but maintaining those that we do have. We're not adding any either, but it's just, again, just maintaining business for productivity and for quality.
Okay.
Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address city council on public hearing number seven?
Anthony America, Port Huron. There's something wrong here. All the demolition of these houses, pretty near one-third of our city gone with that stupid bridge expansion. All them people gone, all them houses gone. Now you're demolishing houses, and now on number seven, you want to give a tax break to people. Why should they have tax breaks? No one gets tax breaks. The people don't get tax breaks. Why should anybody get tax breaks if we can't have tax breaks? That's if our water bills ain't high enough. And then if you're a day late, there's like a ten percent fee. Give me a break. There ain't gonna be no Port Huron with the way they're going. There ain't gonna be nothing left, but maybe rich people laughing.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on public hearing number seven? Declare public hearing number seven closed. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Muller?
No.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. That concludes our public hearings. Now is the time for public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to address the city council on any other item, please come forward and give us your name, and you have four minutes.
Margaret Enright, Port Huron, Michigan. I'm here to oppose the Thomas Edison Convention Center. I mean, like, another nine million dollars? How high can the water rates go and the taxes on the few people that are still left in this community? You just keep spending the money like it was coming out of a fountain somewhere. I'll tell you, my fountains don't spoke coins, and I just can't afford anymore. Pretty soon, there'll be no one left. It's kind of like those media centers they had to build for the school. Now they're so darn small, you can't even have a graduation or anything there. Ninety percent of the time, they sit there empty, and that convention center will be the same thing. And then we, you also want to put a culinary school there for Baker College? Well, Baker College wants a culinary school, tell them they damn well better build it themselves. Don't ask me to support anything like that. And I think this should be put to a vote for the public, and don't tell me we needed to get a petition out and have enough people. This is not Russia. It is not run by a czar or a dictator. The public should be allowed to vote when you're spending this kind of money, our money. You wouldn't have this money if you didn't keep raising the taxes.
Good evening. This is David Ellingwood. I want to speak on Port Huron here. I want to speak on behalf and favor of the bus center there, that we need to have that downtown for people that are legally blind, disabled, and other handicaps out there. And a lot of people that are disabled, they can't drive. They need it in a downtown facade, so that these people that can't drive and do need public transportation have a way to get around. And I think it'd be a much better proposition than to have them all be trying to get on Quay Street like it is now. I'm in strong favor of having this center built, and I would say smack dab in the middle of Port Huron. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bea Castile, and I'm a resident of Port Huron. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Team Access, which is a subcommittee of the Blue Water Center for Independent Living. We, I've left a couple of cards up there that describes what our organization does. We have fifteen to twenty members representing a wide variety of disabilities, cognitive impairments, visual, mobility, health impairments, et cetera. And we're concerned with their inclusion in our community, and also with their respect as a purchasing and consuming public. Almost twenty percent of our national population are people with disabilities of one sort or another. And for some time, I have encouraged and advocated that Port Huron really could be a gateway if we take the key from other wonderfully visionary places, such as downtown Chicago now, and other places that serve seniors and whole families, so that we could really be a focal point for a destination for people to come, and that everybody would be included. To that end, we see this transit center as being one of those hubs. And I'm sure you've seen the design provided by Leroy Stevens, architect, that it is a beautiful design. It complements the waterfront properties that we have. It could be a very attractive hub for information. It would have restrooms in it. It would easily serve the community college, McMoRan Arena, the businesses that are nearby, as well as the civic centers and the library. We would like, our objective in speaking on behalf of people with disabilities is that they be fully included in the community. So we would also be interested in adequate access for people with disabilities who are driven privately or drive themselves. So we're interested also in good accessible parking. Option A, when, you've seen all of them, I'm sure. Option A is the one that's located about one-third of the way west of the, of Superior Mall, and it provides a covered driveway, visitor's center, a rest, public restrooms, a staffed information center, possibly some other concessions that could be there, like bicycles, et cetera. If we, if we see it as an asset, and we, and we develop it as an asset, and it becomes our center point, it can really be the place to which people can be invited to come park your cars, and you can get everywhere in, in Port Huron, in the Blue Water area. So we encourage you to consider option A for the location of the transit center.
Thank you. Can you get that?
Hello, I'm Louis Martin. I'm also a member of Team Access. I live here in Port Huron. And as Bea was saying, the location that she was speaking of is an excellent choice for people with accessibility issues. The closer to town, the better. You really do bring better, you bring more business into town when you have a center that, that close compared to the other sites. Port Huron is a wonderful place. I really love it. And it has so many opportunities, and this would be an excellent opportunity for this town. I ride the buses all the time, and I speak to people on the buses. There are so many people there, not with, not just with disability issues, but people who are retired, people who are using the buses to get to and from work. They have disposable incomes. And bringing that center there would really, really open this town up. It would really be a huge asset. It really would. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Larry Jones, Port Huron. And the first thing I want to say to Jim Wilson is thank you very much for, for all his hard work and his dedication and the money that he wants to put into Port Huron. And I totally agree with the, you know, with handicap people. You have to make that more accessible, not only for handicap that ride the bus, but handicap that live in the town, that work in the town, and that commute to the town. The only thing, you know, I think the plan that Mr. Wilson's got is wonderful. You know, he came out to begin with with a parking deck, with a parking structure, because he knew how important it was for, for future development for that site. So he wanted to put in a parking deck so that the city would, everybody would be close to town, all the retail, all the merchants. But there wasn't enough money to do that. So now they want to do a parking structure. There's a little bit of extra money. They want to do the landscaping, tie the college into town, which is a beautiful thing. But the only thing is, is nobody is really looking at the benefit of the city. Because if you put a parking or a transfer station right close to Superior Mall and cut out the parking, and the handicap folks that don't get on the transfer station and onto the bus, and they have to go around all the buses in order to get to parking, you know, there's no benefit to that either. So, you know, Mr. Stevens and Mr. Wilson and the handicap and the city need to sit down together and put together what's best for the city. And what's best for the city is going to also include the handicap And what's best for the city is going to also include the handicap people, the merchants downtown, you know, because we have to have a city in order for them to come to. And if you take all the parking away, as we've discussed, if you take a, a photo of, of the mall and the huge parking lots around the mall, and where does the handicap bus pull up to let people off? Right at the door. Not out in a parking lot. So the same way with this transfer station, people are not going to go to the vintage from that transfer station no matter where it's placed in that lot. That bus is going to drop them off at the door of the vintage. The, the critical thing with having the parking, the transfer station back away is to have parking close to the downtown for the handicap going both directions. And that's the thing that nobody's understanding. You know, ideally, it would be wonderful to be able to have a parking deck there if there was enough money so that people could go, for the handicap could park in there, they could go through a walkway into McMoRan, they could go into Sperry's, they could go through Sperry's and dump out onto Grand River closer to town. If those funds, it's like always, if there was enough money for everything. That's the reason why we need enough parking so that we can have better stores in Sperry's, better stores downtown, because we've had so far in just the last month, we've had many people can, you know, wondering about leases for downtown, but their first question is, is what about parking? How can we, how can we support our business with five, five parking spots on Huron Avenue? So that parking is very critical. And so the, ideally, if we can have a future parking deck, which is what we're going to need if we, you know, proceed the way we want to. So that, and then the other thing is, is people, you know, are knocking down the Edison Inn, the parking structure out, or the, the 69 corridor, but yet the, the thing that they're complaining about is they're tearing houses down because people can't afford to fix them up. The number one thing we need in this community are jobs. We need good jobs. We need income that, that people can afford to fix up their home, that they can afford to rent a house and pay enough rent that the renter can afford to fix up the house. Those are the things we need, are jobs.
Mr. Jones, your four minutes is up. Sorry.
Thank you so much.
Cut you off in mid, mid thought.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor rep. My name is Phyllis McVanwell. I live on Maple Street here in Port Huron. I am also the vice president of the Blue Water League of Port Huron. And I'm here to help support the transfer center on the McMoRan parking lot, the south side. I think that's an excellent place for it. I know there's been a lot of discussion, excuse me for a minute. I know there's been a lot of discussion about it. A lot of people doesn't understand, for blind people, it's easy for us to get confused and lost. And with this transfer center, where it's going to be, it's going to make it easier for us for walking distance to downtown shopping, to the restaurants. The senior, seniors are right across the street. The colleges is right across the street. A lot of us do take the handicap buses, but there's times that we cannot take the handicap bus, but we can take the line buses. We try to be as independent as possible. And it, people don't understand that we need to get around as much as people that drive in a car. People driving a car can get to a parking spot and walk their distance. We, we have to depend on us. We've, we're trying to be as independent, sometimes we can't. I would love to drive a car, but I know I can't. I never will be. So this, this transfer center, I think is a very excellent place for this. I think if you put our, yourself in our places and put, walk the distance we have to walk. We don't want to walk across a lot of busy street because people think they're going to lose their parking spots. But if people would just think about our feelings, it would help us out a lot. It's not only for the blind, the low vision, the handicap people. There is people, tons of people that's taking the bus nowadays. So please help support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Lapores, Port Huron. I'm part of the Blue Water League too, and I like to see the transfer center go into McMoRan and, because it would, like they, everybody says, it would help us that are blind and all the handicap and mental people with problems and all that, that, that play right there in the McMoRan lot would be more essentially located and really help everybody. I mean, it's, even people that drive, that park in the lot to take the bus, it would help them out too, to save money. It's cheap transportation for people that want to use it. I know there's a lot of people say, oh, that's just for the poor and, and poverty and that, but it's not it. You or I and everybody to ride the bus and, and save money and gas and that. I appreciate, I hope that it will be approved right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm getting pretty good at going backwards, you notice that? Actually, what I just heard right there, I guess that's a good problem to have, that we're, we're worried about parking because our business is coming to downtown. That's an excellent problem to have. And certainly you don't want to get on the bad side of Mrs. Denright, I can tell you that. Okay. Anyhow, good evening, mayor rep, councilmembers, Mr. Brown, Ms. Sue Child. My name is Mike Bodice of Fort Grash. I'm the president of the Port Huron Area Landlord Association. I would like to make just a couple of comments on the rental inspection fees and rentals in general tonight. Hopefully, the council will support the resolution proposed by Councilman Harris, because I believe the increased rate should have been prorated, part of the 2011, I guess, 2012 budget. Since they were not prorations of the rates would be the right thing to do. And Kim, I do understand, you know, what we're talking about with that, we had the conversation. But I would like to offer an alternative solution. Okay? If you really want to get rid of the headaches that a two-year inspection cycle will give Kim Harmon or staff and the inconvenience of the renters in Port Huron, which the vast majority are good people, you will consider changing the rental cycle back to the original four-year cycle. The six-year cycle we had a couple of years ago was great, but it's probably too long. But two years is definitely too short. Two-year rental inspections are not going to bring jobs to Port Huron and it's not going to make people buy houses in Port Huron. Rewarding the good renters and landlords with a four-year certificate when there's no major issues and giving a two-year certificate to houses that have major issues would make a lot more sense. I ask my renters if they have any issues on, or problems with their homes and if they want strangers coming through their homes, checking out how they live, their bedrooms, etc., et cetera. If they don't have any issues, they don't have any problems, then they sign an access denial form. Bill Johnson, a fellow landlord, always says renters are treated as second-class citizens in this city. At times, it seems that the mentality in Port Huron is that renters don't have enough common sense to know if their home is safe or not. If there is an issue that the landlord doesn't take care of, the tenant knows he can call the city to ask for an inspection, the city will send out an inspector, check it out. Am I correct, Kim? Okay with that. Many times, the city would refer a tenant to me and I would try to help them out if the complaint is a gentleman. Would you, as a homeowner, want some stranger coming through your home every other year to make sure it is safe as if you didn't know better? In fact, I talked to the council member tonight before I said this. In fact, we have a council member who signs a tenant access denial form and I would assume the council member does this because the council member is satisfied with his home and doesn't want any inspectors in it. Most landlords don't have a problem with rental inspections, but the city needs to concentrate on the small percentage of landlords that cause the majority of the problems. My rentals have been inspected four, five, six times since inspection started and I have some that need to be cleaned up, just like homeowners do. But if the truth could be known, I'm sure the inspectors say to themselves, why am I inspecting the same houses over and over when there has been no major issues and the same landlord still owns them? We support the enforcement of the blight ordinance as long as it is enforced fairly for all rentals, homeowners and businesses. We support Chief Reed's new community policing program and we are looking forward to the chief speaking to our organization next month. We support all programs that will improve life in Port Huron, that will increase the va, increase the value of our, of our assets and will bring jobs to this area. For almost 40 years, I have invested everything I have in this city. And because of the economy, loss of jobs, et cetera, I've probably lost 75% of any value I've had. But I still believe that somehow Port Huron will come back as long as we work together and not against each other. Thank you for listening to our concerns and hopefully you will take another look at the rental inspection cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address city council?